I will start with, let's see, starting at seven oh one, we're going to start with our pledge to the flag. Get Miss Katie Kishline if you would like to complete us on the pledge, please.
Our pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ayes.
Ayes.
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Here.
Travis?
Here.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Here.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Here.
Next, we have the resolutions.
All right, hey, it is National Teacher Appreciation Week. It's also today is National Nurses' Day. And so there's so many things to celebrate. We've had a great week just really raising up our teachers. And really, I shared with our staff this morning that when you're an adult in a school building, whether you're a paraprofessional, you're working for class food service, you're a bus driver, so often, you know, Jack Borsma's there, I find that young people just refer to an adult as, oh, that teacher. And it's mindful that really everybody in education is someone who's influential and someone who makes a mark. And there's no better way of representing that. Right, literally, physically, this moment, we have our seniors are out playing lacrosse, women's lacrosse, it's their senior night, a number of people rolling off, this will be one of their last games in Porter Stadium. All the way over to the auditorium right now, got about 600 people participating in the Fine Art Festival, Fine Art Awards tonight in the auditorium, beautiful things in the library, right outside the auditorium. And whenever I walk around and I see students doing things that you're proud of, and we'll have Monday night in our monthly meeting, we're going to have another whole slew of national and state winners, you always know, you always know there's a coach, a teacher, a mentor, an advisor behind them. So I want to tender this resolution to Miss Kishline. You just stay where you're at. You don't have to do anything other than be here. But so important that Katie Kishline is the president of the union that represents all these fine people. So without further ado, this is a resolution recognizing the Lockport Township High School teaching staff for their daily contributions to the students, staff members, parents, and guardians, District Office Administration, Board of Education, and Lockport Township communities. Whereas the Lockport Township High School teaching staff have brought honor and distinction to themselves, their respective school buildings, and our high school district through their tireless work ethic, commitment to others, grace under pressure, communication with stakeholders, vision for improvement, and empathy for the challenges faced by students and staff members. And whereas the Lockport Township High School teaching staff embody on a daily basis an understanding that their success and accomplishments are part of a broader team effort and living out the slogans, "Best self, best work, and together we succeed." Now therefore, be it resolved on this 10th day of May, 2023, by the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District 205, that the Lockport Township High School teaching staff are hereby recognized for their service, commitment, and contribution as part of Teacher Appreciation Week 2023.
Thank you.
You're welcome. I'm going to give this resolution to Katie Kishline. Could we give, on behalf of all of our teachers representing... You're welcome.
Roll call. For the resolution.
Johnson?
Here.
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Ayes?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes. Thank you.
Do you want me to take this? I am taking the roll on some items for Mrs. Lopez Caniva this evening. So public comment, we'll move to public comment, and I probably should get myself working on our agenda here. At each regular open meeting, members of the public and district employees may address the school board during the public comments section of the agenda. Individuals appearing for the board are expected to respectfully follow the guidelines of Policy 2:230 and Policy 8:30 available upon signing. Public comments are important to the board. However, it is customary not to respond on issues until time has been taken to gather information and discuss all options. Lack of action or response, thank you, Mrs. Croy, or response does not imply a lack of interest in the issues brought to the board. And tonight, we've got Tammy Hayes.
Hello, I'm Tammy Hayes. As you guys all know, I've been here a million times. I just want to say thank you to the outgoing members of the school board. Thank you for your service. I'm sure that no one knows exactly what they're signing on for when they sign on, but it took, you know, it takes a brave person to step up and try to help out your community. And we appreciate your time and we wish you the best in what you do next. I also want to congratulate our new members, Dr. Sandra and Coach Marty and Dr. Shaw. I know that, again, same thing, it's a big undertaking. People don't understand the amount of work that's involved. And I hope that every single one of you will continue to keep in mind that the education of our students is first, taxpayer money is second. But really and truly, we need our kids prepared for the next stage of life. Please keep that always in the front of your mind. And again, congratulations to those who won, and best wishes to those who are leaving. Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items two through three?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Travis. Are there any questions to those minutes? All right, hearing now the roll call.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Ayes?
Abstain.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda items two through three?
Second.
It's been motioned by Dr. Shaw and second by Mr. Ayes. Are there any questions? Great, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Ayes?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, Press Policy 111. Do I have a motion to accept the Press 111 policies as presented?
Second.
Ayes.
It's been motioned by Mr. Ayes and second by Dr. Shaw. Are there any questions?
Just before the roll call, just remind the public and remind the board, this is really the end of a very long policy journey you have been on. Press 108, 109, 110, 111, it's about two years worth of legislation, roughly about 200 policy reviews. Most of these are wrapped around a very important law, two important laws, FACE Law and Aaron's Law. Aaron's Law is protection of children from grooming and predatory behavior outside of school. FACE Law is really designed to protect students inside school in terms of employee, administrator, board even, conduct. And this really brings to a closure, there's two policies in here that are not related at all to FACE Law or Aaron's Law, but are recent updates. You approved these policies a year ago. There's no update since. But I think it's monumental work in the state. And just appreciate your fortitude working through all of that policy work and just bringing it home and having our policy in alignment with really, you know, two years of legislation. So thank you. I don't know if there's any questions about these policies, if you're ready to vote.
Travis?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Ayes?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
All right, do I have a motion to turn the current school board's side eye?
I'll make the motion. Who is there?
Second.
It's been motioned by Mr. Lewandowski and second by Mr. Ayes.
Get that up quick enough?
Shaw?
We don't have any other business.
Navarro?
Yes.
Lewandowski?
Yes.
Ayes?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
All right. Congratulations, Mr. Lewandowski. We did not have a chance last month, Mr. Ayes, to properly give you a moment to acknowledge your service. So we also, you know, gave you a way of traveling with the thing. So congratulations to Mr. Ayes as well. All right. And then, Mr. Borsma and Dr. Rogers, you pick your seats. You know, usually for tonight, board members decide where they sit, so I leave that up to you. But you come on down. So where you sit, well...
Good night, everyone.
We'll get you. We have all sorts of gear for you.
I don't bite. Don't matter. How are you? I don't bite.
Got my little prize here. Take the prize more down here.
Thank you. Congratulations to you.
Thanks, Dave.
I'm not going into it.
It's fine. Yes.
Jump into it?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we will jump into new business of this board. The first piece of new business, board members, you've got your folder for this evening. If you turn in, pass the agenda, pass the protocols. I received, my office received from Lauren Staley Ferry, County Clerk to Will Conne, the election results from the April 4, 2023 consolidated election. You have an official abstract of those votes. Those votes are certified and final. They declare Dr. Veronica Shaw reelected, Dr. Sandra Shimon Rogers elected to a four-year term, Mr. Marty Borsma elected to a four-year term as well. And then also, you should have in your folder, from the county clerk, certificate of election. That is for you personal. It should be in there. I think it's in there, isn't it, Kathy? And if it's not, we have your certificate. Oh, I have your certificate. I'm sorry. I've got it. I will get back to you. So that certifies, you know, for the board that the election results are final as canvas on April 25. You're seated. Here you are. Congratulations. Can we give these guys a big round of applause? And it is official, you know, here is your certificate that you are duly elected, which is kind of a cool thing, right, you know, to be elected to a public office. So keep this, you know, for yourself, for Ethan. Congratulations, everyone. And congratulations, Dr. Shaw. All right. At this time, and I'm sort of sitting in the stead of Mrs. Lopez Caniva. Mrs. Lopez Caniva is the current president-elect, and all of you would stand and recite the oath of office. There's two options, new members or all members. And Mrs. Lopez Caniva requested that. So in her stead, you know, without current vice president falls to the secretary. Could you lead the board in the oath of office? Is appropriate to stand and take the oath. Usually, it's like the Pledge of Allegiance. The oath is in your folder. To make sure everybody's got their oath, it's a couple pages in. And I'll turn it over to you, Dr. Shaw. It's just the one page down to the last statement, "I shall strive." The rest is just procedural.
I solemnly swear that I will faithfully discharge the duties of the office as a member of the Board of Education of Lockport Township High School District in accordance with the Constitution of the United States, the Constitution of State Billowing, and laws of State Billowing to the best of my ability. I further swear that I shall respect taxpayers' interests by serving and being protected by the civil liberties assets. I shall encourage and respect the free expression of opinion by my fellow board members and others to seek and hearing before the board while respecting the privacy of students and employees. I shall recognize that a board member has only authority as an individual that decisions can be made only by a majority vote and a valid board meeting. I shall abide by the majority decisions of the board while maintaining the right to see changes in such decisions for potential and trust representatives. As part of the Board of Education, I shall accept the responsibility of my role in the adequate role in quality education of every student included in this district. I shall foster with the board extensive participation of the community for forming new roles despite our own self-centered courses over the heart of the township high school district. I shall assert the establishment and structure and environment designed to ensure all students have the opportunity to attain to their maximum potential through sound organizational framework. I shall strive to ensure continuous development of student achievement and all conditions of effective engagement of our children in compliance with state law. I shall serve as an educational advocate on behalf of students in our community schools or schools through management's vision for our Lockport Township High School District. And I shall strive to develop the district superintendent and the leading school district for fulfilling the vision the board has created, fostering excellence for every student in the area of academic skill, knowledge, citizenship, and potential development.
Thank you. Shaw.
Typically, we have to, the board has to select what's called a president pro tem. Typically, the superintendent serves that role. That role is just to lead the election of a board president. And then it's turned over to that duly-elected board president. In your agenda, in the detailed agenda up here, you can see the description of my policy, what the board president does and the other officers do. Unless there is an objection, you will put me the president pro tem. Are there any objections?
No.
You know, the qualifications are listed. We have to nominate, we have to select a secretary pro tem, and that is typically your recording secretary, Kathy Maxwell. Are there any objections to Kathy Maxwell serving as the recording secretary pro tem?
No.
I'm going to call this election to order in order, in purpose of electing first a board president and then the remaining officers of the board. Just to explain, everyone, how this works, there's nomination. There needs not be a second to nominate. Anyone can nominate themselves as well. But any nomination doesn't have to be seconded to move forward. You know, depending on how many candidates there are, we do take a roll call. And as all things with the school board, except for the five exceptions, in certain, where we have a larger majority of five, you know, someone has to get to four votes of the seven in order for that election to carry. So I'm going to open the floor now to... So, I'm going to open the floor now to nominations for president of Lockport Township High School District 205 Board of Education. Are there any nominations?
I'll nominate Ann Lopez Caniva.
Are there any other nominations? Since there's only one candidate nominated, we can do it by voice vote. And so, all in favor, please say aye or yea.
Aye.
All opposed, nay or no? Any abstentions? Congratulations, Ann Lopez Caniva.
Thank you.
As president of the Board of Education. You take over, and I'm willing to help for the nomination and election of vice president. The same rules apply.
All right. I nominate Veronica Shaw.
I nominate Michael Travis.
Are you saying? Are you abstaining or declining? You're declining the nomination. Okay. And candidates can decline their nomination. They can take their name out of the hat.
All right. There's been nomination for Dr. Veronica Shaw as vice president. Are there any further nominations? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion, Matt?
Let's see.
Yeah, Dr. Shimon Rogers. Both have a motion.
All right.
Secretary.
This is for the secretary. Oh, no.
Yeah, this is secretary of the board. The role that Dr. Shaw used to serve in.
All right. Nomination for secretary?
I'd like to nominate Dr. Sandra Shimon Rogers.
Are there any further nominations for board secretary? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We have the appointment of the board recording secretary.
Typically, my administrative assistant, Kathy Maxwell, I'm just going to publicly say is an outstanding administrative assistant, even better. Board secretary selfless, works tirelessly. If there are no objections, she would serve as the board's recording secretary, takes your minutes, does your correspondence, works with IASB. Really, any-
Organizes all.
Organizes all, really, to be honest, right? Any objections? Congratulations. You're stuck with us, Kathy Maxwell. And then, also, the board has to appoint a treasurer. Certainly, the board can appoint one of its own members of the board. Typically, the treasurer is the director of business services. That would be Mrs. Stephanie Croix, seated behind me, unless there are any objections or nominations by the board. Stephanie is also stuck with us. Congratulations, Mrs. Croix. Do you want me to jump into the next item?
Sure. Yes.
The next item, this is actually an action item that requires a roll call vote. And I just want to make sure that board members take a look at it. It's a little easier to see if you take a look inside of your folder. A few pages in, you'll see all of our meeting dates. And these are corresponding dates typically on the third Monday of the month. We occasionally do have some Mondays, the third Monday of the month, we don't meet. Those are typically state or federal holidays. For example, you typically would meet on June 19th of this year. That's a state holiday. You'll meet on June 26th. You'll also see that we have occasionally, the third Monday falls on Columbus Day or Indigenous Peoples' Day, Martin Luther King's Birthday, President's Day. We usually move off to the very next week rather than making it earlier. The primary purpose, just to make sure that board members understand why we don't meet earlier, you might say, why don't we meet on the second Monday, is to give our treasurer, Mrs. Croix, enough time to give you the most accurate financials. That's the primary reason that we go towards the end of the month. That's why we're going June 26th, especially because it's end of the year. You can see your dates. I know it's very hard sometimes predicting your own personal lives and things that might occur and take place. Any questions? This does require your vote or roll call vote to approve these dates.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
And I apologize for not bringing this up ahead of time.
That's fine.
November 20th, I just want to echo what I've heard some board members say before, that is typically the day we get back from IASB, the day after we get back from IASB. And it's a very exhausting day. I didn't know if anybody else had thoughts on that, but I just wanted to bring that up.
That is, that's entirely so. So, typically, the board will, that weekend, 17th, 18th, 19th, you'll be at your state conference. And then, you know, you really have an option of, you can meet on the 20th. You certainly could meet earlier. That's entirely up to you. And we can amend it. There could be a motion to amend this. And then, you vote on what's proposed, amended. It's, we're at your service.
Are we looking for that motion right now?
Yeah, you can discuss it or move it.
Does any, I mean, does any, I love hanging out with everybody. We hang out till Thursday, Monday, then, but-
Yeah, I like to see that change.
You'd like to see that change.
You met this year, you met a week earlier.
Yeah.
So, you met, what would that be? The corresponding date would be, yeah, November-
13th.
Right.
So, we would meet on Monday and then-
And actually, you know what? I think I'm wrong. Actually, you did meet right after Triple I this year. So, maybe that's what you're talking about, Dr. Shaw. Yeah, you would meet on November 14th. You can meet November 14th or right after Thanksgiving. You could meet-
Either the 13th or the 20th.
You mean the 13th.
13th or 20th.
I like the 13th.
Is there, Mrs. Croix, do you have a preference from a financial point of view?
The 13th is a really tight turnaround for carrying playoffs.
Yes, what?
For our accounts payable. So, our ProKuma card bill closes on the 5th. So, between the 6th, and she would have to cut checks on the 8th, she would have two days to get all the receipts from everyone.
Well, I say leave it at the 20th.
You could go the 27th. I mean, that's right after Thanksgiving.
That's right after Thanksgiving.
Yeah, it is. Also, my mom's birthday.
So, Luanne, you want to keep it the same?
Yeah, I want to keep it the same. Versus after Thanksgiving.
You think we're okay?
Okay. I know. Yeah.
I'm flexible, so.
Can I say something? I don't think it's marked, but isn't June 26th the, like, fourth Monday?
It's the fourth Monday, yeah.
So, yeah, I think that should be changed to be marked.
They shouldn't.
What are you gonna-
Mr. Navara, where are you looking at? I'm sorry, I missed it.
June 26, 2023, it should say the fourth Monday. It's the only one that isn't marked there.
It's there, but it doesn't, it says-
Oh, it doesn't say the fourth Monday.
Doesn't say that. It just says-
Got it. I, 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 so you want the parentheses.
Oh, it's changed here, but it's not changed.
Yeah. It's been moved from the 19th to the 26th.
Right.
He didn't say it up there.
It's on your sheet.
Yeah, it's on the left-hand side of this school year.
Yes.
It's on the sheet.
You got it. It's just a 2022, 2023 school year, 2023, 2024. So, you just need a motion to approve.
So, do I have a motion to approve the regular meeting date, times, and location?
I move to accept the proposed meeting dates.
Second.
All right. It's been motion by Ms. Johnson and second by Dr. Shaw. Okay. Roll call.
Shaw?
Yes.
Borsma?
Here. Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Lopez Caniva?
Yes.
And just so you know, you can't at any monthly meeting amend any date that you meet in the future. And so, it doesn't, this doesn't mean that this can't be amended in the future. Your minds.
Moving on, discussion appointment of committee representative.
And the board has, you know, I might just block E2E3s. This is really, it doesn't require a roll call vote. It's your own organization, you come into a consensus. And there are a number of different roles that board members fulfill. One is the IASB delegate. As you know, that Mr. Johnson serves in that capacity. Every year, right about now, we'll get Illinois Association of School Boards will open up resolutions that can be written. These have been written about everything from resolutions that are then used to lobby the state legislature on behalf of school boards across the state. They have ranged on everything from school safety to Open Meetings Act. That all comes together at your state conference. And then, on the Saturday of the state conference, there's a delegate assembly, and it's like a political convention. There's literally a vote. And it can sometimes get rocky. Ms. Johnson has been the person there. Then, we also need an alternate. Because if you have a delegate who's going to represent us at that meeting, for some reason, if that person cannot attend, we need someone else to attend in our place. So, maybe just, you know, open that up. That is, we have, on this board, we've made the delegate also the IASB governing board representative. We made that the same. So-
What's the, what's the IASB governing board representative?
Do you want to describe, you know, your kind of role there, Ms. Johnson?
In this, in the Three Rivers area, there is a structure where they decide, like, how they have Three Rivers meeting. They decide, like, who the speaker's going to be, the topics, the location of the meeting. And they can put forth resolutions. That's what it's mainly when I went, that's what they do.
So, Mrs. Johnson in our local area represents us there as well. You know, in just the Three Rivers area, she's our representative.
I don't know if you saw the email about, they're going to have a virtual one coming up, virtual meeting, so.
So, just because you're not the delegate, you can also, you can still attend, right?
Yeah, yeah.
Right.
In fact, I encourage people to attend because that's where you learn a lot of stuff.
So, for example, as the IASB governing board representative, let's say the Three Rivers region wants to promote a resolution on school safety. They decide this is a very strong resolution, I want to put it forward. They would have to have their members vote in that smaller area. Ms. Johnson or Curwell would be the person to cast that vote.
Because I thought those two roles were the same.
Yeah, just like when she's the delegate to the assembly of the whole state. They don't have to be the same. This board has typically made them the same. So, it's really, it's really entirely your decision how you do these roles.
I mean, I have no problem having Ms. Johnson again as our IASB board representative delegate because I know she's very up to date on everything. She's always bringing us information from that. And then, of course, with her resolutions, I mean, she counts on those things, so it's-
And she's been doing great.
And she's been doing great. I mean, always going there and coming back, you know, like, no. You have no objection?
No. No man?
No.
Any further discussion?
For her to be the delegate and the governing board representative?
What she's been doing.
Yeah, sure.
Is there anybody that would like to step up and be the alternate?
I could be the alternate.
Entirely up to-
Doesn't seem like I have a lot of things to do as the alternate, right? It's only if she can't make the meeting?
Right.
Yeah, what would happen is, we usually go over the resolutions as board in October, and we sort of set up, okay, here's how we would vote. Here's how we would like to see Luanne vote. You would cast those votes, Mr. Navara, if Ms. Johnson wasn't able to attend.
Okay.
And then, you would also have to report if she's not here at a board meeting.
Right. You become the reporter, like, what were the resolutions that were passed? What were the discussions? Sometimes, Ms. Johnson gives us color commentary on the mere fisticuffs of IASB goings on.
It depends on if there's some hot issue going in the state. Like, the one year that they had, you know, teachers carrying guns in school, that was very hot, and there was a lot of discussion back and forth. In fact, when people came out, the news reporters were waiting to get comments from the delegates.
And the Illinois Association of School Board carries weight. It's, you know, obviously located in Springfield, it carries weight with legislators because it represents you elected officials to other elected officials. So, it advocates on your behalf. Okay, so, Ms. Johnson, IASB delegate and governing board representative, Mr. Navara, the alternate. Another appointment that you need to make is a representative to the foundation board. We have over 25 years, the Lockport Township High School District 205 Foundation is an organization that is your representative in many ways, an independent organization to the broader community beyond the school community, but also does an amazing amount of work to fundraise on behalf of teachers and students. Next week, a week from today, the foundation and Ms. Adolph will be at the helm of one of the best things I think we do, which are scholarships. And they serve as the clearinghouse, and in some cases, the decision-makers for scholarships that students will receive. I don't want to put you on the spot, Ms. Adolph, but how much in scholarships next week?
Just from the foundation or in general?
Foundation and then in general, if you don't-
I think the foundation this year is, I don't want to misspeak. I don't-
I'll put you on the spot.
Approximately.
I'm going to say $65,000 this year from the foundation. And then, as a whole, like, I think it's like $100,000 plus that we give away that night. It's the best night to give away other people's money.
Right, right. But it's also a moving night because many, the foundation helps to steward many of the people, like Dr. Shaw has a scholarship, who, for a variety of reasons, have endowed a scholarship. Oftentimes, it's because they've lost a loved one. So, it's very meaningful for them, right? They've named this scholarship, Miss Drive has named this scholarship after his mother. Very meaningful. Foundation handles that. But the foundation also does community events, like the Taste of Lockport, can have two summer movie nights. I'm not going to tell the films, that's your job to announce those. But just a community event on Porter Stadium this summer, bring your lawn chair, bring your chair, blanket, enjoy, enjoy, you know, nighttime film on Porter Stadium. So, the role of foundation board representative is much like my role. We serve on the board, but we do not vote. We're liaisons from the board to listen in. And really, our role is, I try to make my role to stay quiet. Everyone's shocked. And just answer questions that the board might need help with in terms of school assets, health, facilities. And then, also, what I try to do is be at the events and work, you know? Taste of Lockport, just working and helping that event to be successful that night. So, if you're a board member, they meet every Tuesday, first Tuesday of the month, 4:00 PM, right here. And then, you're usually asked to support the events and to be present at the events, work the events in many ways.
I would not mind being on that.
I would also like to ask to be foundations because I do like being able to work at events.
I would like that. I mean, so, I don't know how-
Yeah, you guys have to talk it out.
You have to talk it out.
If it's Ann or if it's Ann, you guys probably have to talk out, you know? I don't know. Ms. Adolph, if you want to share what you need the most, if that would help board members kind of-
So, for the foundation, typically, what the foundation board is 15 individuals. So, we've, they're looking for a liaison to support their own vision and come alongside what the school board, you know, is visioning for them. It is, yeah, it's the meeting, what we're really looking for is someone to make sure they're there for all the different meetings that we host. You know, this month, we'll probably have three different meetings just because of Taste of Lockport. Sometimes, our executive board will need things like that. So, I guess I'm looking for someone to want to attend one more meeting a month and, you know, just kind of be a really good listener. And Dr. McBride said, having someone support the events, and there's nothing- And there's nothing more fun than, you know, cleaning up garbage after an event. But that's that is that is what we kind of, you know, those are the things that we're looking for. Attending when we have social gatherings and things like that. So it's it's definitely definitely involves reading more. I send out minutes and agendas and, you know, so it's just to be prepared for yet another meeting, not as long as this meeting. But another meeting.
I would also say there's just the board, you have to decide. There is nothing that prohibits two board members from attending the meetings.
That was my question.
And we we would also say, the more the merrier. You know, we could, you know, use the help, the importance is having board liaisons and constant participation. So the board can say, great, we have two people willing to serve on that board. Awesome. You know, let's let's do that. So that is entirely up to entirely up to all of you.
So we can both do it?
Yes.
If that's if that's your pleasure.
Sure, why not?
So so that begins, that's effective immediately if you all agree to that. When's the next meeting?
June sixth.
June sixth.
So we have.
June sixth, four P M.
We have an event on the fifth, we have a meeting on the sixth, and then on the seventh. Welcome aboard.
Yeah, in the in the merry month of June, it's very busy. There'll be, and and so just got to give, you know, Mr. Navara and Mrs. Lopez Knieba. The Foundation will be downtown for cruising nights on June fifth. You know, the expectation is, and I'm on the boards, the expectation is to to be there, you know, supporting, meeting people, introducing them to the Foundation. The sixth meeting, the seventh is the is the first moving night. And we could use plenty of adult adult help.
And then twentieth is the golf outing.
Yeah, the golf outing is the twentieth.
Twenty eighth.
Twenty eighth is is the golf outing. We also need people present at the golf outing now as well. Still time to sign up for a foursome. Okay. Is everybody comfortable with that?
Sure.
Do you want me to do the rest of the?
Sure, sure.
So the the other thing the board has to organize itself is, for about, I believe, the past two years, the board has had two committees. Typically, board, school boards have have these two committees. Sometimes school boards will have a third committee, which is a policy committee. This board has not had a policy committee for two reasons. One, we subscribe to press. You you pay the Illinois Association of School Boards to translate legislation into policy. And I would say most school boards in the state of Illinois do that. Policy committees that boards have typically work on their own to translate legislation into policy. So that would involve working with the board's attorney, Robin Schwartz. You're 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 doing more of the 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 sort of getting your fingernails dirty policy work yourself. It can be very, I've been on policy committees, I'm a straight life. You're you're really getting in there. You're doing the work that press does because you want want to do that that kind of work. The second reason is generally this board has opted to do your policy work as a committee at the whole. And there's there, you can always change that. So you fall into two specialty committees. Curriculum Committee, which takes a look at instruction, looks at academic programming. Typically, that that serves, we preview what will come to the entire board. So for example, if you look in the month of October, where I do the Academic Achievement Report, we preview that to the Curriculum Committee earlier in the month. Then there's the Finance and Facility Committee. I would tell board members, I believe the Finance and Facility Committee will be very busy in the next year. If this board moves forward with looking at renovating and revitalizing Central, which I'll I'll talk to you a little bit more about on Monday night, my superintendent report, and just throw in an ad out, tomorrow night, we have another tour of Central, six thirty P M. in the evening. It will be tough parking, there's a volleyball game there as well, but there's plenty of neighborhood parking. That will be a very, very busy committee. Finance and Facility will do a lot of the clearinghouse for the board and work with Mrs. Croy and Mr. Thompson. And so typically, an ideal size of a committee is three. It could be as small as two. Once it gets to four, that really is four or above, that that starts to feel a little bit like a meeting like this. You can still have a committee of four or five. All committee meetings are public, but you do not vote in committee meetings. Voting occurs in a full, regular session. Committees can bring recommendations to the board, but they do not vote in committees. So typically, you know, one, carrying these on, we need some direction as administrators, if you would like to carry these on, continue these committees. Dr. Christophero and Dr. Huntington, who's at a award ceremony, a family award ceremony tonight for her son, Chair of Curriculum Committee, and Mrs. Croy chairs Finance and Facilities. So one, if you want to continue these, it would be my recommendation you do. And then who, really, you just have to roster up who would like to be on on one committee.
Are we looking to finalize these tonight?
You don't, you don't, Mr. Boersman, you don't have to finalize them tonight. As a board, you could say, because really, a board member can can sort of sign up for a committee at any time. So you don't have to decide them, you know, tonight. You could later say, you know, I I do think I will join this or that that committee. And the nature of that is because those committee meetings are all public meetings with published board agendas as well. So we make the board, you know, public where it was at.
Well, we can at least say that, you know, one or two people can at least go into the Curriculum Committee and then, you know, Mr. Boersman, if you'd like to then join one of those committees, you can always feel free to say, yeah, you know, if you're thinking about it, you know, I'll I'll join, you know, either the curriculum or the, you know, the finance facilities. So at least we can get this going, at least to have one or two people because, you know, at least to start the process going. And I know that Dr. Shaw and Ms. Luanne Johnson were part of that curriculum committee. I don't know if they still want to be on it or not, you know, I I don't know. But if there's still an interest there and, like you said, if anyone else wants to join in.
What's the headspace of everybody? Where does everybody want to be, like, curriculum wise?
You mean committee-wise?
Committee-wise, committee-wise.
We knew what you meant.
Yes.
Committee-wise.
I I think I would like to stay, because I went on the Finance and Facilities, I think I would like to stay on that committee.
I'd also like to stay on that.
And you're on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
So then that means there's, that's two people confirmed. Does anybody want to balance it out and confirm for curriculum?
Well, like I said, at least if if you already have an interest on there.
I was with.
And you, and, oh, yeah, that's right, you were also on the curriculum. So at least, you know, you and I, we've already expressed an interest on the finance facilities. If someone else like Mr. Boersman wants to say, yeah, I want to be on that, you know, or maybe, you know, we can. So at least, at least we have one or two people on there.
Can you be on multiple committees?
You can be on multiple committees.
I'm not looking for answers.
I I'm fine with staying on the curriculum committee, I really enjoy it. But I'll probably attend some facility meetings.
It is difficult because it is, if you are on two different committees, you have to attend two extra meetings in addition to our monthly meeting. So there's that. But sometimes we do make it so that it meets before the regular meeting. Like our last Finance and Facilities Committee, we met before the regular meeting. But that's still like five hours of like, meeting. And that could be hard for some people.
There could be like a topic in that committee to say that I would be interested in attending that curriculum committee, you know?
Right.
I have done that, you know? There was a particular topic that was going to be discussed, and I attended that meeting.
And and you're not in any kind of open meeting violation, because in a committee structure, it's a public meeting. It's a public agenda. Just the guardrails we have to put in place is boards can't take votes in committees.
I I just want to correct something that you said that you could just attend. I thought we can't just attend the meeting as board members. Like, since I'm on the, like, if I'm not officially on the committee, I can't just attend, right?
You can attend as an audience member. Yeah, I I don't chair some of these committees.
You don't chair out anything in the meeting.
Right. You're you're visiting.
You're like the audience, you're like the audience.
Of the audience.
Yes.
And and like I said, the only kind of governor is that, you know, if there are three committee members, a fourth steps in to visit, you certainly can't take any kind of vote, even though it's a public meeting. You know, you don't have the entire board, this is where votes have to be placed. So that's just a an appropriate guardrail. But board members can do it at any time. I I would say, you know, Ms. Johnson knows, Dr. Shaw and Mr. Travis, the my proclivity for curriculum instruction. But where we do need to really get rolling is on Finance and Facility. There are a number of things afoot right now that I think it would be important for board members. We've done one full programming meeting with the entire staff at Central Campus. That was D L A architects coming in and working with them for a full day about the needs of that building. Probably done this semester, three, maybe four type of events at Central to share with community members what the needs of that building are. Next week, on May eighteenth, and I'd invite any board member that would like to go, we're going to go visit two schools. Downers Grove North, which is an extensive, really a completely remake of a vintage building, a nineteen twenty-six building. And then Lyons Township High School, which is under renovation by our architects, D L A, which is a more space by safe space, three-year renovation. So it gives you kind of a sense of how you could take a vintage building and renew it. But if that's a discussion, the board continues on with that discussion. There is so much that has to be talked about, has to be examined. And and really, that's that's moving forward now. And we would sure like to bring board members into conversations with D L A, conversations that that were involved in tours that were involved in, as well, and Finance Facility Committee is where we could use some some help with that. And we'll probably, after this meeting, you know, regardless of how many board members are on it, really start with a a more robust schedule.
Is there anyone interested in being in the curriculum committee?
Which committee?
In the curriculum committee.
Anyone else interested?
Anyone else?
Oh, you're talking to me?
Yes, are you interested?
Yeah, you know, that's what my fashion.
I know you were on it, Mr. Travis, you still?
Yeah, I was there.
Okay.
You know, maybe Dr. McBride, they could visit one of the committee meetings so they could get a flavor. Then that way, they can make a decision then versus saying I want to.
No, absolutely, absolutely. It's it's a far more fluid, you know, structure than 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 these meetings, except for it has to be a published agenda. And just to kind of give you an idea, not to speak for Dr. Christophero or Mrs. Croy, but what they do is is they work with you, they work with board members to try to find a time that the committee can meet. We are for this meeting of the whole board on a particular schedule. That's not the case with with these committees. They work with everyone, figure out your schedules, and what's good, what's not good.
Yeah, curriculum, we typically meet quarterly.
Right. Yep.
All right, okay, thank you. All right, yes.
Okay, last piece of business, and this does require action on the part of the board. You have in your board folder draft application for Board Education State Representative. Just to give you a little bit of history on this. At the beginning of the school year, one of the things that we were talking about was just student voice. The board was talking about elevating student voice, include student voice. And we began doing that in a number of different ways. We certainly had student government presents to us, Student Equity Action Committee has presented to us before. Mrs. Croy did a great job involving students in some cafeteria decisions. As we came back online with normal cafeteria options, operations. And we just had a conversation in the fall about how can we elevate student voice? You know, there, I think Ms. Hayes said they're, you know, really at the at the center of the decisions, their achievement, right? Is at the center of, you know, the decisions that you make. A number of us at last year's Triple I Conference attended a presentation given by Illinois Association of School Boards. Illinois is one of the states in the Union that does permit students to apply to the board to actually be board members, sit on the board. They cannot vote because they're not elected and they cannot have access to closed session materials. But they sit on the board and they give you as a board the student perspective on things. We we saw that at your board's self-evaluation on December fifth. You felt that you wanted to move forward. So we did the policy work to create a policy to to put into your organizing principles that you could have two student members on the Board of Education. So now, with a newly seated board, what I would recommend to you is that you open up applications tomorrow for a future sophomore, a future junior, or a future senior to be able to apply. There's a timeline here, and then there's a a selection process. In the selection process, as I talk to the Illinois Association of School Boards and really to every high school district, this is a a feature you'll see at most high school districts. Evanston Township, Oak Park River Forest, Lydon, Downers Grove North and South, Glenbar, District eighty-seven, given that we weren't working mainly with high school stadiums. The recommendation with I A S B is that you you mirror what would you do if you had to appoint someone to be on your board? If one of you suddenly had a life change, you had to resign from the board, the the board takes applications and you you actually interview candidates and appoint them. And so that was the recommendation, I felt that 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 really, I couldn't find anyone who has any other selection process. So that's at the heart of this. So the the one, you know, this motion opens up these applications. May nineteenth, that would be a week and a half is the deadline to complete this application. Applications would have until June second to complete their two letters of recommendation. During June, we would, on your behalf and working with you, kind of do some some checking, checking the references, checking, you know, standard things that we do, grades, discipline, involvement in school, sort of some vetting for you. On June seven, July seventeenth, you would use closed session to interview students as a board. Who, some finalists, we would work with you in the month of June to get to some finalists. You would literally use a closed session to interview them. And then on August twenty-first, they would attend their first meeting at the table with you. So the application is here, the rationale, the purpose behind having two student board members to include student voice in decision-making and governance and our process. We happened to be at a meeting, Ms. Adolf and I, on behalf of the Village of Homer Glen. We had some officials from Homer Glen who wanted to do a focus group with students. And I was in a pinch, so I selected every student that we're going to honor on Monday night who lives in Homer Glen. So these are some fairly accomplished students in in our district. There was, when we talked about this, right, Ms. Adolf, there was a lot of leaning forward. There's a young man here who is sitting in, who already has expressed interest in applying. So quite quite a bit of interest.
So the applications are already out?
They're not out, they they have to be approved by by you. So this is an approval item, you know, so the typical discussion, my recommendation is that you.
So May nineteenth is not a feasible date, right?
Well, it'd be a week and a half, Ms. Johnson. They they have a week and a half to complete the application.
Okay, so they got to find out about it and complete the application and send it in.
And one reason why I would recommend that is because at this time of the year, there's sort of deadline creep, you know what I mean? One of the things I've found is that the further out you give a deadline for folks, teenagers, the further out it it goes. It's a two-stage application. The first, the the application in front of you is really an expression of interest. The more muscular work is to get your letters of recommendations. So there's, most of this application, if you kind of, it's inside your folder, if you just thumb through it, is who are you, what's your name, what's your interest, what have you been involved in here at L T U just? And then really just an essay that asks you, you know, shortly. And then really just an essay that asks you, you know, short, we did short answers rather than a big, long essay. You know, that, I think that would make it easier for you, and we modeled this off of other districts. Why do you want to be a board member? What would your goals be? What do you think is preparing you for this? Usually, short chunks are, are more helpful. So this is really more of a survey. Any questions or?
So you're, you're thinking they should have more time, Ma'am?
Well, today is the tenth.
They give us nine days. They have nine days to complete that.
Yeah, but the kids.
And that gets tough too.
Yeah, because then they're going to be signing for finals, and it just gets more and more busier.
That's why I was thinking you got finals, you got a lot of stuff going on.
Right, we're trying to avoid the two things I know is once students get out, then you completely lose that.
I understand it.
And then we're also trying to avoid is the last full week of school because the start of that week are normal school days, but the end of that week are final exams. So that the last week of school generally is a pretty distracted week around here. Seniors get out on the twenty-third, even though seniors are obviously not eligible for this. You, you can amend it, you can, we'll use whatever due date you would like if, if you just feel that, hey, we keep it open until the last day of school. It's a simple change on the Google form.
I got a question with regards to athletes. So if you have somebody who's playing a false sport, they're going to miss some of these meetings, they're going to be discouraged to apply. What happens in that case?
You know, typically, athletes, we don't compete very often on Monday nights. It's not, usually our conference doesn't compete. Our high competition is either Tuesday, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday. That's also, Dr. Rogers, the reason they have two representatives. So if you get into that situation where there's a conflict, for some reason it's a school activity, practices are usually something that students can make because they can come from a practice if they, and they absolutely have to, to a meeting. And then one of the things that we did do is we advertised on the application what the dates are of the board meetings. So they're, they're aware of that. So hopefully, there's some redundant systems there that, that people can kind of work on. The, the, you know, the challenging thing is so many of our students who'd be interested in this kind of thing are oftentimes some of our most involved students, right? A lot like you, you all have very busy lives, lots of commitments, things that you're doing. Our five student government presenters are five of the busiest, five of the busiest kids I know, and have had a great attendance throughout this year. They've been great about that. And the reason why we have five is so that they can plug and play if there's absences. So this is really entirely, you know, this, this is entirely up to you. You, you could, the, the dates are flexible. We'll, we'll publish them as you, as you would like.
I'm fine with the nineteenth being the deadline.
Yeah, you would just, you know, you would just need a motion to approve this timeline in application as presented. Or someone would have to move to amend it and then second it. Either one.
I move to approve the application as presented.
I second. Are there any questions?
Yeah, just as long as there's a way to get this info out to the students.
Will this be advertised on the splash page, things like that?
Yeah, we, so we're ready to go if you approve this. So we'll immediately put this on the splash page. It'll go off, out on all of our social media channels. We'll do announcements at Central and East tomorrow. And, and just for everybody to gather, to the splash page, whenever a student opens up their Chromebook, there's a landing page that they see, so every time they open the Chromebook browser. And, you know, you almost can't function without every class period opening it up. So it will be right there, popping up, apps.
And I know as a board, we've been talking about it, you know, these past several months. So I know that, you know, students are aware, I mean, student government, they're aware that, so I'm sure that word has already been out there.
It'll be in the Friday message tomorrow, this, this Friday as well. Message as well, so.
All right, it's been motion by Dr. Shaw, who seconded it, I'm sorry, and, and seconded by Mr. Navarro. All right, roll call.
Johnson?
Yes.
Navarro?
Yes.
Shaw?
Yes.
Travis?
Yes.
Borzma?
Yes.
Shimon Rogers?
Yes.
Lopez-Cunha?
Yes.
Announcements?
Announcements, you'll get more announcements from me in your regular board meeting. But the most important announcement between now and then is we'll, we'll launch this tomorrow on all of our channels. Mrs. Castillo, you know, you're getting ready well. This weekend is the musical Godspell. So there were some previews today, which was dynamic talent, but also probably previewed why we need a renovation of our auditorium, sounded light. We're just, we're struggling, you know. And really credit Dr. Laura Gilbert, you know, directing through that, and Brian Colby, working through that. So if any board member's interested in attending, please just let me know. I think it's fabulous. And just to kind of feel good out of the nineteen seventies. And then I'll have a whole slate of announcements. Over the next couple of weeks, if you're taking notes, one of the best events that I think anybody can go to is next, Wednesday night, May seventeenth, seven P M. That's our scholarships, really just, just amazing. There's an event Friday night, if you're interested and you enjoy baseball. We have an alumni night Friday night, so a little special, bringing back baseball alumni out at the A Field. That's another event going on, so some things in the short term. In the longer term, you know, probably a date that, a couple of dates that we're spending some time with. May twenty-third, first time we will exit seniors early. Their last day of school is May twenty-third, a lot of excitement around that. And then June third is graduation. And thank you for everybody getting everything back to us in terms of, in terms of graduation. You know, attendance, things like that, and people are working. Dr. Green's staff is working around the clock on, on that event. Four P M. Saturday to June. Mrs. Maxwell, anything I was supposed to remind the board? I, we, we just had to grab Dr. Rogers and Mr. Borzma, just a few things we want to make sure we get.
Yeah, I took care of Marty.
I do, I do have, yeah. I do have one reminder to the board. Monday night, we'll gather at six P M. And I know Dr. Rogers and Mr. Borzma, you have to get your formal picture taken for our website and for things that we, we submit, pictures that we use in a variety of places in that district. Any other board member who wants a retake? If you're pleased, we're going to try to match the backgrounds. If you can't improve on perfect, that's okay. And then immediately after just getting photographs, we do have a closed session, important closed session. We've got to transition very quickly to another set of resolutions in the cafeteria. One really important thing I can't stress enough, there are just so many students that we're going to acknowledge on Monday night, and that is incredibly important. But also, our retirees will be there. And, you know, these are folks who've put in their whole career, a lot for township. These things begin when you come to the end of your career, they become extremely important. And your presence and engagement is just a signal to them that, that you see them as, as bittersweet, right? In some ways, you're excited to leave, in some ways, you can't believe that thirty-five years, you know, went in the blink of an eye. So I just, you know, appreciate you being there and appreciate your support. That's Monday night. School picture day if you are a current, you know, older board member, but certainly for Marty and, and Sam.
Thank you, Dr. McBride. Do I have a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting?
I'll make that.
All right. It's been motioned. Who's second?
I'll second it.
All right, it's been motioned by Mr. Travis and seconded by Mr. Navarro. All in favor?
Aye.